Are you ladies, uh, ready?
Just one second, please.
We're burning daylight, you know.
It's really not too sunny out, so we're okay.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome, sir.
You missed the just.
I think we should start this meeting with a prayer of hope and kindness. Which county, Kim?
You doing okay, Melissa? Okay, great, okay. It is nine oh one. I will call this meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Equalization to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. I should make the comment that if you're watching this, there will be a time delay of a short bit. Present in the room at this time is Commissioner Wiems, Commissioner Uller, Commissioner Hughley, and myself, Commissioner Woodruff. Commissioner Brunz is on another assignment and will be joining us shortly. Also with us today is Deputy County Clerk, Alyssa Wilson. We have County Assessor Julie Stinger and appraiser Ashley Kuchulow. Other members of that team will be joining us in and out of the room as needed. Notice was given that on five twenty-four twenty-three, a certificate from the Lincoln County Assessor was received and filed by the Lincoln County Clerk. Said certificate indicates the Lincoln County Assessor has completed the revision of the 2023 assessment rolls for real property for Lincoln County. Copies of county profiles for residential, commercial, and agricultural properties are on file, as well as the assessor's worksheets. Each board member has had a chance to individually review the protest, the assessor's recommendation, referee's recommendation, if noted, and make any notes or comments himself. The board will correctly vote on each individual protest. These meetings are recorded. We will discuss and consider property valuation protests, Form 422. And I would start with you, Commissioner Hughley.
I have protest number thirteen for Jeffrey Roat. PI number eight four five one zero point three six. It's part of the southwest quarter of eight thirteen thirty-one, ten point zero one acres. Mr. Roat is asking that the land be reduced from... Well, it's written, it's not a reduction. It's currently a... Thank you, reverse those. In twenty-two, the land was assessed at twenty-six thousand double oh seven. The... Although he has it written in the opposite area, he's asking that it be increased to thirty-three five fifteen. It says priced land as combined, and it would be my motion thirteen, whatever thirteen is.
Raise.
I move to raise evaluation after additional information was received. The land was priced as if combined with partial eight four five one zero point three four, which actually was protest number twelve. So my motion, the land be priced thirty-three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars.
Second.
Uller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Protest three seven five for Jeffrey Eichner. ID zero zero three two six eight five point zero zero, rains addition ten and eleven. Protested valuation, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty. Asking for a reduction to one hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty-eight. No improvements done and have neighbors' houses vacant for over a year. Nothing improved in neighborhood. I believe he did bring some pictures in when he met with the referee. It was reviewed by Henry, and Henry's recommendation is no change. Evidence provided does not warrant a change. The referee agreed with Henry, no change. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. That leaves the land at eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six, buildings at one hundred and seventy-nine thousand thirty-four, for a total of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty. My recommendation is number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wiems. Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
On protest number three one five, Mr. John Rogers, three four oh seven South Seifer Road, Sutherland. Property ID zero zero nine four one six seven point zero seven. The legal description is part of the northwest quarter, northwest quarter of fourteen thirteen thirty-four, ten point one acres. Mr. Rogers is protesting the total of building and land of two hundred and eighty-four hundred and six... Two hundred and eighty-four thousand one hundred and sixty dollars valuation. He is requesting two hundred forty-two thousand five hundred seventy-seven. Based on the house is in need of repairs to fascia and siding, deck rotting, and partly demolished. Basement is unfinished and used for storage. Actually, reviewed this and changed the condition on the detached garage to below normal, which the photos that were sent in do document that fairly well. Added a five percent functional for missing fascia and railing on wood deck. This did go to the referee, and the referee did concur with the assessor's office that the valuation would be lowered, not as significantly as was requested, but the property valuation was lowered a little bit. And that would be my motion is after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor... Whoops, nope, that's not right.
Ten, possibly?
Yeah. Yeah, number... Yeah, I... After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and the referee, I moved the lower... Moved to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. Because the referee... They did meet with the referee, and the referee did concur with the... To the assessor's recommendation. And that recommendation is land at fifty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, improvements at two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars, for a total of two hundred and seventy thousand two forty-four. That would be number ten is my recommendation.
Second. Wiems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Protest two five four. The ID is one four eight three zero, one four eight three zero. Other... They describe as Dirksen's subdivision, west two hundred and twenty-four foot and ninety inches, lot number one. Physical address is fourteen thirteen North Franklin Avenue, North Pla... Tracy E. Fletcher and Alyssa Ann Fletcher of the... The land value currently fifteen thousand two sixty. Buildings at seven hundred and fifty dollars for a total of sixteen thousand ten dollars. They're requesting a land reduction value to eight thousand five seventy. Buildings remain at seven fifty. Total aggregate value of nine thousand three twenty. Alyssa signed the petition and states there's been no changes to property. We've not added anything or made any improvements to the lot. Lot has two rundown sheds and sit on there. Previously, when we purchased the home with the two lots, if I can see the photos. I did look at the photos. Those buildings are prefab metal storage, little storage buildings. They look functional. The lot is a nice flat property for a good place to fall under, whatever. Henry reviewed all of this. Basically couldn't see any value changes that he could do because his quote is no change in land values equalizing the neighborhood in dash one. He recommends the land stay at fifteen thousand two sixty. Buildings... The buildings are at seven fifty again, and the total remain at sixteen thousand ten dollars. I concur with Henry's assessment. My motion is number four for no change.
Second.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Aye.
Protest number three twenty-one, Joni D. McCleer... No, I take that back. We're going to do protest number twelve. I apologize. Protest number twelve, Jeffrey Roat, there was no referee. This is partial number... Well, let's see if I deduced from the last one. I'll probably be able to get pretty close there. Is it eight four four? No, it's eight four five one zero point three four. Part of the southwest quarter of eight thirteen thirty-one, ten point zero one acres. They're asking that the land and improvements be reduced from three hundred and twenty thousand six hundred and eight to two hundred and eighty thousand four eighty-seven. The land was combined with the partial I just had read, which was protest number thirteen. It may be my motion number seven that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation as follows. Land thirty-three thousand five fifteen. Improvements two sixty-eight, six forty-three, for a total of three hundred and two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars, number seven.
Second.
Uller.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Protest one eight six, Tom Engelhardt. This is for ID zero zero eight eight one three five. It is Lake Maloney, lot two fifty something. Is that two fifty-five?
Twenty-eighty.
Two fifty-eight, thank you. At one hundred Eagle Nest Road. I do believe this is the Lake Maloney Gun Club property. Protested valuation is one hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-four dollars. They are asking for it to be lowered to fifty thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Lake Maloney Gun Club does not own the land. They are a five oh one C three. We do not own, and he did include pictures. There are several items that they say they do not own. Are these like improvements that are on the property? Like maybe storage containers and shelters?
Yes, they're storage containers. So when we were out there, when we did our review, we asked him who owned them, and he said that they were his, but the gun club was purchasing them from him.
Okay.
So we told him that, we asked, do you want to put on I O L O cards, or do you want to put on the gun club cards? And he told Charity and I just to put them on this card.
Okay. That explains that. Thank you, Ashley.
Yep.
So Charity did review it. Her recommendation is no change. Items were explained to the resident. No evidence presented to warrant a change. It did go before the referee, and Marcia Trigo agreed with Charity's assessment. No change. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. My recommendation is number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
What's the... Wait. What's the value?
One hundred and sixty-eight thousand fifty-four dollars.
How many acres?
So that would be a good value. Somebody wanted to buy it for a gun club, wouldn't it?
Probably.
Probably.
If you could keep the lease.
But your liability insurance would run you out of business.
So green, green trap huts, lighting, canopies, yellow storage containers, white storage container, brown shed.
So those storage containers are being taxed as a fixture?
For commercial, we do, yes.
Really?
Yes. On commercial...
Even though they're not fixed to the property?
For commercial, yes.
For commercial only?
Now, residential, we don't.
So the land has no value because it's on by MPD.
Ag and residential, no?
So it's a leasehold.
Like portable cabin shit or something that's not on the foundation, those will be taxed as well.
Really? Okay. Good to know. Okay, thank you.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
That'd be a tough one to do.
It would be.
Protest three five nine, Mr. Don Hanson, twenty-two oh two North Sheridan, North Platte. Property ID is four nine four five five. Property description is Zager subdivision, seven two one TP. Tell me again what TP means.
Red town, it's in city limits.
It stands for the twin plat, but that's the one TP is inside the city of the plat. That's the local subdivision.
Okay.
It's a secret code only to the assessor, not to the...
I was wondering if that was it. Mr. Hanson is protesting the overall valuation of ninety-three thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars. He's not protesting land, but he is requesting a total valuation being dropped down to seventy-five thousand due to needing replacement of windows, siding, roof, AC, and heater. Evidently, there's some issues with the floor beams as well. This is a modular home that the photos do show some condition issues, and Charity agreed there, or made that recommendation, that she should change the condition to below normal due to multiple condition issues. And I would certainly concur with that, as did the referee. This was viewed by the referee, and the referee concurred. So this is going to be, again, a number ten. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. The land stays at eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars. The improvement's at sixty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars, for a total valuation of eighty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-three dollars. Number ten.
Second.
Wiems.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Uller. Aye.
Aye.
Protest two fifty-nine. Property ID is two three zero five, two three zero five, also known as six fifteen West Seventh. Original town, six seventy-eight one. City of North Platte. Again, six fifteen West Seventh Street. The protested... Charlotte Corn is a protester, petitioner.
Excuse me just a minute. It's nine nineteen. Commissioner Brunz has joined us. Good morning. Morning.
Good morning.
I will note that he didn't bring breakfast for you.
Okay. Make note of that.
All right. Regarding protest two fifty-nine, the total land and buildings value protested is seventy-nine thousand seven four four. And that's an aggregate on the requested valuation, which is also an aggregate number, sixty-six thousand nine eighteen. Ms. Corn indicates in the comment section, foundation is cracked, roof needs replaced, and three, across the street from the U P Railroad. Henry took a look at this one. Petitioner provided some pictures of the foundation and the roof. Henry couldn't factor in some of the concerns with the locale, with the railroad. But he did review the pictures and saw the foundation issues, and so he noted that they were there, it exists, and he applied a five percent functional depreciation because of that. So he would recommend the land remain at fourteen thousand four twenty-nine. Buildings be slightly reduced to sixty-two thousand seven eighty-two, and the total value would be seventy-seven thousand two eleven. So that would be a number seven motion, which I move to approve.
I'll second that motion. Aye.
Aye.
Brunz.
Abstain.
Are you ready?
Um, not quite yet.
Okay, okay.
Protest number... Three twenty-one, Joni D. McClure. Partial number zero zero two six four nine zero point zero, Lakewood Highway Seventh Edition. Lot sixteen in the north half of lot seventeen, block five. They're asking that the land and improvements be reduced from one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars to one hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred. Dated interior, ridged hill carpet from the seventy-two. Were dropped on the north bedrooms. I did look back, and we have this graded down already. Charity Farley had made that change probably back in seventeen or an earlier date. So it would be my motion number four, that after I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time, evidence presented does not warrant a change. Land eighteen thousand five ninety-five, improvements one hundred and thirty-two thousand nine fifty, for a total of one hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Uller. Woodruff.
Aye.
Wiems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Joe, when did you see the total was?
One fifty-one five forty-five.
That's not what I have.
Okay.
I have the land at eighteen five nine five, and then, let's see, one nineteen one thirty... And I have the improvements as one nineteen six eighty, for a total of one thirty-eight two seventy-five.
Oops, sorry, guys.
It's okay.
I think it's snowing outside, yeah, but be ready in case it does.
Yes, I'm always ready for snow.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm with you.
I'd be okay if it snows.
I feel your pain.
Cooler temperatures.
Oh, yep, she gave it ten percent functional appreciation. Better go ask her what she wants to do. I'm gonna go ask Charity.
Okay, so we're gonna be on...
Hey, bring Henry down here when you get here.
Yes, I'm gonna have a question for Henry.
Charity just knows when she's needed and shows up.
I wish Henry would just stick around.
Do you still need Henry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, okay, leave him alone.
He can come in and out, but that's why he doesn't sit in here.
Okay.
Who brought the power rings?
Some cop. I don't know. No, Julie did. Thank you. Actually, we went over to Raleigh's office and confiscated it.
No, we do not underpart, she does have a purpose.
I'll hold on that for just a minute, or we'll have it shortly.
Well, there he comes, all right. Hi there.
Good morning, Henry.
Good morning.
Uh, Joe.
I was asleep that day. This is what I have in the card.
Okay, what do we have for dwelling?
Henry.
Need a red pen to correct it, Charity, are you thinking it?
I don't have a property card on this.
Oh, okay. And so you're recommending a drop.
I'll make sure my eighteen is five ninety-five.
Okay.
And so this one is what?
One nineteen six eighty.
Six eight four.
And your total's one thirty-eight.
This one you should have two seventy-four.
Thanks, ma'am. And by the way, I agree, and thank you, the reason I thought maybe it was okay because... Did I make it funny or something?
I know, but yeah.
Okay, so...
I'm making it for myself.
Okay, we're back to it, okay?
So you have the exact amount now?
Back to protest three twenty-one for Joni D. McClure. I think that I read that in, but I would like to note that the assessor's office did reexamine...
But I would like to note that the assessor's office did reexamine the property. And if I get back, maybe I will find. Well, we're gonna get to the chase here. But it wasn't, okay, so we're gonna stay at number four. I would move that the land remain at eighteen thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars. That the improvements be reduced from a hundred and thirty-two thousand nine fifty to a hundred and nineteen thousand six hundred and eighty. A total land and improvements from a hundred and fifty-one, five forty-five to a hundred and eighty-eight, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two seventy-five. Uh, number four of my motion.
I think number four is no change.
Oh, is that a no change? Okay, then that would be number seven. Number seven, my problem. I guess I had a number four written down before. Thank you very much.
No problem. Uh, second.
Hi.
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 All right.
Protest three two three. Lencio Martinez at six oh one East Quarter Horse, Quarter Horse Drive, zero zero eight six zero five five point zero zero. Part of the east half of section twenty twelve twenty thirty. That seems like one too many numbers. Uh, AKA track twelve of that section, ten point one eight acres. Protested valuation is a hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, asking for a reduction to ninety-nine thousand. His remarks is property is in sad condition, see attachment. He did attach some pictures that support his evidence. It was reviewed by Charity. Uh, her recommendation is change the condition on the house and the steel utility building to fair due to multiple condition issues. It did go before the referee, and the referee agreed with Charity's recommendation to, um, lower the assessment. Uh, Marcia states, I agree with the assessor's recommendation to lower the value. That puts the land at forty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-eight. Lowers the improvements to a hundred and thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-two for a total of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. My recommendation is number ten. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I lower, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Brunson.
Hi.
Healy.
Hi.
Hi.
On protest number four seven eight, Joe and Gin- Gina Koubek. K O U B E K. Sixty-four nineteen West Koubek Road, North Platte. Property ID is five four three one zero. This is Briner's second replat of lot two, Briner's replat, lot one. This is five acres. Are protesting the valuation of one hundred and seventy-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, requesting a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. We do not feel this is an accurate valuation due to we just protested in twenty twenty. Showing that the house is not finished, nothing has changed, it is still unfinished, and the roof needs replaced. Ashley reviewed this, oh, there was a, uh, an appointment with the referee that was canceled. Ashley, um, suggests no change. The house is already receiving a fifty percent functional depreciation for not being complete. Received updates cost tables for, uh, twenty twenty-three. This is one of those properties that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, but it had received, um, the, um, used new, new cost tables for twenty twenty-three. So this is going to be a, um, no change, and that would be, um, it was, uh, there wasn't really any new evidence presented, was there Ashley, to you? I don't, I don't see anything here as any new evidence. Okay, this would be, uh, I move to recommend the, to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to change or to warrant a change. Number two.
Second.
Williams.
Hi.
Brunson.
Hi.
Healy.
Hughley.
Hi.
Uller.
Hi.
Hi.
Number, protest number two fifty-five. Property ID is one five eight eight zero, one five eight eight zero. Also described as lot eight in Farrell's replat and part of the vacated alley of, uh, uh, original town, or no, it's not original town, it's just within the city limits. Otherwise, physical address, twenty-six oh one West Eighth. And they also listed section thirty-one township fourteen, range thirtieth of Lincoln County. Uh, the, uh, petitioner is Justin Hurst. Um, the land value currently is ten thousand ninety-two dollars. Buildings are valued at forty-three thousand six fifty-six, and the aggregate is five three seven four eight. They were requesting reduction in land to six thousand nine seventy-five, and, and buildings at twenty-nine thousand four sixty-five, the total being thirty-six thousand four forty. Comments are, we've not done any improvements to the house or property last year, it went up seven percent, and this year, uh, we want to tax it at another thirty-seven point seven five percent. Where there is no modification. Plumbing is old, wiring is old. There's no way this should be taxed this high. The siding is old, it only worked for thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars I paid. There's a crack. House, two houses west. Emailed photos. I do have those photos. I, I, Henry looked at this, and obviously he looked at the photos as well. Um, and it is a mixed neighborhood, as many are, and nice, some very nice properties next to this, and some run down. The, this particular property, this single wide manufactured home looks, uh, looks sound. And then Henry apparently agrees that there's no warrant for a change. Um, he also, I also looked back, he did not say this in his comments. His, his comments say, no change evidence provided does not warrant a change, which were the pictures. I would also note in, in January, this was, this received, if I'm not mistaken, a twenty-five percent functional depreciation applied for all single wide manufactured homes to reflect market value. So Henry says land stays at ten thousand ninety-two, buildings stay at forty-three thousand six fifty-six. And the total is fifty-three thousand seven forty-eight, so my motion is number four. Second.
Brunson.
Hi.
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 Hi. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four one zero. This is for Larry and Marcia Bowman. Uh, property ID is five four six nine three point eight one. Real property description is Indian Hills Estates, lot six, block four. Is one point seven seven acres. The protested valuation for twenty twenty-three has landed forty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Improvements at three hundred and eight thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars for total valuation of three hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four dollars. The requested valuation drops total valuation down to three hundred and twenty thousand even. Reasons for the requested valuation change are, the sales in the area do not reflect the increased valuation. Next door and across the street are assessed less. Um, they, he provided a letter where he talks about other, uh, houses in the neighborhood that have sold and are assessed for less. Uh, he also provided information off of, uh, the GIS on those properties. Taking a look at those properties, though, they're not apples to apples. Um, he did see the referee, and he did talk with Charity on this. Uh, both of which are recommending no change as the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. The assessor's office also notes that sales in the subject neighborhood support this value and range from a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot up to two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, with the median sale price per square foot of two hundred and six dollars per square foot. This subject property is assessed at one hundred and ninety-nine point nineteen, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and nineteen cents per square foot. So, uh, it'd be my opinion, and I would move reason number five, to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time, the evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Hi.
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 Hi, sorry.
I did say that.
And you're okay.
Oh, you're up, I'm sorry. He's got a hard, he's got a hard one.
She gave me a hard one, so, um, protest number, I apologize, guys, I'm sorry. Three seventy, it's, um, I think it's Sheila Alvarez. Partial number zero zero one six one six zero point zero. Fourth addition, it looks like it's lot ten of block one. They're asking that the land and improvements be reduced from ten thousand three ninety-seven to fifty-one forty. I don't feel the people will move back because the neighborhood, no sidewalks or no driveways. Be my motion number one, that, um, no change is the land is equalized within the N four neighborhood. Leave the land at ten thousand three ninety-nine, or ten thousand three ninety-seven as it was, there's zero on the improvements. The motion, my motion number one.
Second.
Uller.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Brunson.
Hi.
Healy.
Protest two four eight, Casey Dewey. Property ID one six two eight zero. Flynn's addition nine through three, six eleven East Ninth Street. Protested valuation is, uh, seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-four, asking for it to be lowered to fifty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. Foundation issues. And he did attach many pictures that, um, probably support more than just foundation issues. It was reviewed by Ashley, and she changed the condition on the nineteen eighteen house to below normal and changed condition on the nineteen forty-three house to poor. That left the land at ten thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, lowered the improvements to fifty-seven thousand ninety-six dollars for a total of sixty-seven thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars. It did not go before the referee. My recommendation is number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Brunson.
Hi.
Healy.
Hi.
Uller.
Hi.
Okay, protest four seven nine. This is owned by, um, K. Road Rentals LLC, which is the Kubeks on sixty-four nineteen West Koubek Road, North Platte. This property is three two one South Elm Street. Property identification is three one one six zero point six. Patrice's subdivision, lot nine, block seven. Again, that's at three twenty-one South Elm Street. They're testing the valuation of eighty-one thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars, requesting sixty thousand. And the basis for that is, their statement here is, we just purchased the house three months ago for sixty thousand. The house needs lots and lots of work on it. They don't feel as though they should be by eighty-one thousand five thirteen.
Yeah.
Uh, this was, they did have an appointment with the, um, referee, but that was canceled. Ashley, you make the recommendation for no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All south side properties received a one point one six adjustment for falling out of compliance with state mandated ratios. So this is the house they evidently bought way in the pocket. And are gonna build or refurbish. But the valuation is what it is.
I don't think there is any pictures or anything.
No, there was really no evidence submitted. There's none included in here, and, um,
And I did not talk with them, so.
Okay, so, um, this is going to be, uh, my motion is to, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. No evidence was presented to warrant change. Number two.
Second.
Williams.
Hi.
Brunson.
Hi.
Healy.
Hi.
Uller.
Hi.
Hi.
Protest two sixty. ID number three nine three five zero, three nine three five zero. Rexon Pearl Seal. It's also described as, uh, Southfield Eighth Edition. Uh, lot six, block two. Physical address is twelve oh eight South Emery Avenue, North Platte. Current value is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand seven eighty-seven, that's an aggregate. Requested reduction is also an aggregate number, two hundred and five thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars. Comments are, needs updated. They provided a number of photographs, um, many interior photographs. Check, uh, Charity reviewed this and looked those, uh, photos over that they were, that she was provided. And her comments are, the house does not appear to have any major updates in a while, but it is well maintained. House is already assessed in above normal condition. No change evidence presented does not warrant a change. She would recommend the land stay at seventeen thousand nine forty-five, improvements at two hundred ten thousand eight forty-two for total value, again, of two hundred twenty-eight thousand seven eighty-seven. I will also note for the record, reviewing her comments in January, this also received a trended adjustment of, I think, one point one seven because it was out of compliance. So I would have, my motion would be to approve the no change number four. Second.
Brunson.
Hi.
Healy.
Hughley.
Hi.
Uller.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four one five. This is from a Leonard Engelhardt. The property ID number is nine zero two zero point zero zero. The real property description is the Bricks. Third addition, lot four, block one. The protested valuation for twenty twenty-three has landed eighteen thousand three hundred and nine, sixty-nine dollars. Buildings and improvements at one hundred and forty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars for aggregate valuation of one hundred and sixty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. This did receive a one point one six trended adjustment. The pro- uh, requested valuation is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar aggregate valuation. Reasons for the requested cha- uh, valuation change is the house needs roof replacement, sofa and fascia, all the carpet, as well as a large sliding door and the driveway. Charity worked on this. Uh, she notes that she spoke with the owner, trying to get, the owner's trying to get an estimate for a new roof, but has not had any luck getting a contractor over to do one, which I can fully believe. States that the roof is getting so bad, it is starting to sag and showing inside the house where it's causing cracks in the ceiling. Believes it will need to be completely redone, including the decking, and estimates forty thousand dollars to do the whole roof. Charity went ahead and gave the house a twenty percent functional depreciation for needing a new roof, and deducted twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars from the overridden value for twenty twenty-three. This also went to a referee, and the referee agrees with the assessor's recommendation to lower the value. That new value from the assessor's office is land at eighteen thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Improvements at a hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-nine dollars for an aggregate valuation of land and improvements at one hundred and thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Taking a look at, uh, this information, there's no photos or anything provided, uh, but I would, I would, I didn't, um,
I actually went and drove by the house to see if I could see anything of the roof.
Perfect. That is a question that I had, is Perfect. That is a question that I had, is if anybody actually laid eyes to see if, you know. Okay, so with that information from charity, it would be my motion that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee and her inspection of the roof, I would move to lower the valuation to, actually, it's going to be number ten. I would move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation to the values that I read into the record.
Second.
Hughley.
Hi.
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 All right.
All right.
Protest number four oh three, Melissa M. Gore. Parcel number zero 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 seven two nine three point zero. It's Myers Second Administrative Subdivision of Hastings Addition. Eleven and twelve. You know, that's strange because that should mean lots of eleven and twelve of a block, but it says eleven and twelve lot one, so I'm just reading what's there. The physical address is thirteen ten North Poplar. They're asking that the land be reduced from twenty three thousand three hundred and thirty three dollars to twelve thousand three fifty six. The building be removed at a zero cost for a total reduction from twenty three three thirty three to twelve thousand three fifty six, as there's currently no permanent structure. The entire building was torn down approximately on April third, two thousand twenty three. That was noted by the assessor's office. And it would be, they recommended no change as the house was present January one. And it'll be removed from the twenty four taxes, but was, was present on January one. So it would be my motion, number four, that I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change. Land at seventeen thousand seven ninety three, improvements five thousand five forty for a total of twenty three thousand three hundred and thirty three dollars.
Second.
Uler.
Hi.
All right.
All right.
All right.
Hi.
Protest four zero four, Sally Wilhelmson at twenty seven fourteen Cedar Berry Road, Runstrom Second Subdivision, lot three, block two. Protested valuation nine, a hundred and ninety two thousand seven hundred and eighty one. Requesting a lower valuation of a hundred and seventy two thousand eight hundred and thirty seven. This was reviewed by charity. Her recommendation is no change. House is already in normal condition due to the condition issues and dated interior. It did not go, there are pictures attached. It did not go before the referee. My recommendation is number four. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Woodrow.
Hi.
Wings.
All right.
Brons, Hughley.
Hi.
Hi.
Protest number three seven six, Todd and Alicia Herndon. Thirty two eleven South Oak Street, North Platte. Property ID is three zero eight one two point two five. This is Oakview's second replat of Huffman's subdivision two, two, lot one and two. They are protesting the total valuation of two hundred forty three thousand three hundred and ten dollars, requesting two hundred and eighteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Made comment in regard to more acres on the adjacent property and the garage area and about the same square foot of the house. But their value is less than ours. I see pictures of a home. Indicates it's in good repair. It's in a nice location. But Henry, you reviewed this, and this did go to the referee. And the referee agrees with the assessor's recommendation. Henry is suggesting to lower the evaluation based on taxpayer information. The condition was changed to normal for the year it was built to correct conversion error. So this is going to be my recommendation and my motion that after testimony received and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which is the land stays at seventeen thousand six hundred eighty four dollars. The buildings would be reduced to two hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and sixty five dollars for a total of two hundred and twenty six thousand four hundred and forty nine dollars. Number ten.
Second.
Wings.
All right.
Brons.
All right.
Hughley.
Hi.
Abstain.
All right.
Protest two sixty five. Property ID is seven six one four five. Further described as Lakeview Addition three and four, block ninety six. Petitioners Paul Shaner. I'm not certain of the physical address of this, and Charity worked this. List of, address of eight oh six Nile, North Platte, but suggest, this is in Walthely, correct? Okay. So as I work through this, I'm going to have a question on the land value. Currently, the land value is thirty five hundred dollars. The buildings are eight thousand eight sixty two with a total of twelve thousand three sixty two. Mr. Shaner is requesting the land remain at thirty five hundred, but the buildings be only a thousand dollars for a total of forty five hundred dollars. His comment is, the house tore down in October of two thousand twenty two. Only thing left is garage and a fourteen by twelve behind garage. See attached, I don't see any attachments, Charity. But I will read into the record your notes. Apparently, there was going to be a plan. You looked at this in twenty three and noted this was an unlivable property. Part of the roof had caved in. He must have insinuated he was going to bring a modular into the property. And again, his comments here that the house is torn down in October of twenty two. But in fact, you revisited the property July of this year, twenty three, July third. And in fact, he has not removed that house. So your recommendation is to leave everything as is because you've already downgraded this to unlivable property. Here's your comments. Land stay at thirty five hundred, improvements at eighty eight sixty two for a total of twelve thousand three sixty two. Charity says the property was visited one twenty six to verify the removal of the house. It was still present, but in very poor condition, and a photo was taken to prove that, or show the house was still present. No change. Condition's already been changed to very poor for two thousand twenty three due to the house not being livable at that time. My only question, Charity, is why a lot if it's got, we talked about basic values. Why is a lot only worth thirty five hundred dollars? And that's it. That's the reason. Okay, very good. So I've read into the record all the recommendations, and so my motion is to approve the no change number two.
I'd second that.
Can I, we have some discussion.
Yes.
Chairman, yes, okay. I don't, I didn't, I don't even know who the individual is. It doesn't matter. But my question was, I don't know, it seems like this is some kind of an official document. I know that when we in the past have had individuals come in, you know, we've, the past forum, but we haven't this time. But that's, that's, that bothers me when they made a statement that it's been torn down. And we go out and put eyeballs on it that it hasn't. I mean, that's clearly tried to defraud the government. To me, that seems like it's beyond a civil matter. I mean, that's, that's, I don't like it. I'm sorry.
Sometimes, Joe, though, I don't know that they're aware of the assessment date of January one. So when he was in in July, because I see photos on the phone of the new house that's there that's being worked on, it is gone now.
Oh, so I take it back. When Charity?
This photo was taken in January.
Oh, my, my bad.
For the record, we have to assess the property.
But I, but I understand, but I take my comment back. I misunderstood. I thought she was just there. So my, my comment, I withdraw. I totally understand.
Yeah, I believe Ken did say she was there July third.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misread it.
No, that's fine.
You updated it July third.
That's our protest, no.
So that, I read it incorrectly. That's my mistake.
Okay, then my comment is not.
I saw the seven thirty.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, that's my mistake. Thank you for putting that out for the record.
Good.
Very good.
We're all good.
Yep.
We had to kill some time, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. It's fine. We had business to take care of.
Good discussion.
I did.
All right.
Hi.
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 All right.
All right, I'm gonna probably need I'm gonna, I'm gonna need some group input on this one, I think. So, Mr. Chairman, I have protest three nine three. This is for a Chad Sander. The property ID number is six eight three two five point zero zero. The real property description is lot eleven, addition fifteen dash nine, improvements only. This is out at Jeffrey Lake for everybody's reference. Protested valuation. So this is where I have, okay. Protested valuation has land at zero. Because this is out of Jeffrey Lake. Improvements at three hundred and thirty two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars for total valuation on three hundred and thirty two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars. They're requesting a valuation of two hundred and eighty thousand. And the reason for the requested valuation change is their place at Jeffrey Lake is not year round. It does not have a foundation on the old part of the cabin. It does not have central air or forced heat. It does not have a garage. The lot is smaller than most, and they would like the opportunity to explain in person. They did go to a referee. So the question that I have question that I have of the assessor is when it goes to referee, because this packet didn't have the property card and it doesn't have any photos or anything other than what the protester provided to the referee, it looks like. Are they able to pull up this site? Does the referee pull up GIS and take a look at what these photos are that are right here?
I think had the capability to do that.
She had the capability, yes.
Okay. So if he's there and he's arguing the points that he's making.
But they, the referee did have a copy of the front sheet, and it was just copies, so it must not have gotten put in there. But the referee did have a copy of the front sheet and then the assessor's, whatever your sheet is.
Okay, because the reason why I ask is there's, the assessor's office is recommending a drop, and the referee is asking for no change. She's recommending no change.
I add this, is it, is she recommending no change from the recommended drop? Because when you look on the sheet.
She's recommending a no change from what was assessed for two thousand twenty three. So Henry worked on this and says that after reviewing taxpayer information, he changed the old section of the cabin of eight hundred and fifty five square feet to a single wide manufactured home. Because if we scroll through these photos, you can see it's there's an old mobile home, ma, single wide manufactured home, that they have built an addition around. The referee is recommending no change as the information presented by the owner was not sufficient, in her opinion, to legitimize the decrease. And I'm, so she had the opportunity to pull up photos. She has full understanding of what this property consists of because he was here arguing those points. I'm questioning the group on what they think we should do. Should we drop it to what Henry is making recommendation of dropping it to two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and thirty five? Or do we keep it at the assessed value for the year of three hundred and thirty two thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars?
You have my full attention, Christopher.
Occasionally, you know, it's scheduled in six days before we have had a chance to look and put our recommendation.
I asked Henry. Henry made the recommendations before they went to see the referee. I didn't, I didn't see.
I, I can tell you past history if it means anything. A majority of times, I think the board has looked favorably on trying to do what they felt perhaps gave the landowner a reasonable assumption of being correct, working with the assessor's office. Although I can tell you that has not always been the case because there's been other cases. And there's been a number of times when we've actually raised it above both the assessor and referee if we felt it was something that was pertinent. So I think it's, it's a good point. I think it's a good thing for us to discuss. I think Henry maybe would be the one to address that directly.
It's a possibility that I did that before she saw it, but they didn't get it scanned in. That's a possibility.
Okay.
Because I know I was, some of that was pretty close. I was doing it on the same day that she was seeing it.
Okay.
So it's possible that I did it that morning and she saw it that afternoon. That's a possibility.
Before your recommendations would have been scanned in for her to see your recommendations. Okay.
So that's definitely a possibility.
And Henry, you spoke with her, and part of that was, it looks like in quarterbacking history, it used to be a mobile home.
It used to be a mobile home, that they built the addition. I mean, the addition looks nice.
Yeah, they did a really good job.
And it is, is this waterfront or is this off?
It's beyond water.
Yeah, you can see the water in the background.
Yeah, it should be almost.
But the change he made was acknowledging that that original part was eight hundred and fifty five square foot was a double wide mobile home.
So made that change in the system, and the system is computing this. So I'm inclined to probably go with the assessor's recommendation, making sure that our system, because our system is doing all the calculations and so it would be my motion then, if everybody, obviously the vote will come out, but I don't know if you guys have any other questions. But it would be my motion, number ten, that after testimony and evidence presented to both the assessor and the referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation of two hundred and eighty thousand four hundred and thirty five dollars.
Second motion.
I have a question. I'm going to assume that that equalizes it with like properties in the area. Thank you.
And based on, Henry, based on, to further explain, because it's a manufactured?
Right. That's why I changed it. And in our old system, you just price it one.
Thank you.
And now our new system, we can split this out.
Okay.
And price them manufactured plus the frame addition. We've got that.
I, I, I'm glad we have that capability and that we're able to get down to that granular of a detail in our calculations.
Versus having to use the old deck.
And that, and that doesn't change the classification of that being a mobile home?
No, you can price, the one part is a mobile home and the other part is framed.
Frame, okay.
Yep. And like I said, you can, if you got a new addition, you can leave the old house at like nineteen fifty and put a new two thousand and three addition on. And to get the depreciation right, instead of trying to figure depreciation and all that.
Okay. I'd like to, I mean, given that we can get to that granular of a detail in the system, I love it. And so that, my motion stands, number ten.
Hughley.
Hi.
Uler.
Hi.
Woodrow.
Hi.
All right.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Good conversation.
Protest number three seventy eight, Ann M. Oatsen. Parcel number zero zero one five seven zero four point nine seven. It's Emeryk replat of Emeryk's subdivision of lot one and the east, I think it's ten point two feet or a hundred and two feet, and the west thirty six point three three feet of lot three. You know, I'm going to read this, and I don't know if it makes any sense. What is it?
Emeryk replat, lot one.
Right, but what is, what is the? But, but I mean, is it the east? But, but I mean, is it the east 102 feet?
It's Lot 1 in the east 10 foot of 2.
Oh, 10 foot, okay, 10 foot of.
33 foot of 2 and 3.
Okay, so if. Okay, so the west 36.33 feet and the, of Lot 2 and Lot 3. Thank you. Is that a lot different from what you?
It's just Emmerich Replat, Lot 1 now, but this Emmerich's Lot 1 and all that other stuff, that's what it was before.
Okay, um, they're asking that the land remain at 12, 920. Buildings be reduced to 14,520 to 5,708. Total land and buildings from 27,000. Uh, 690 to 18,000, 628. I'm gonna. And the, uh, referee looked at this also, but when you look at the referee's sheet, it recommends lowering it, which is lowering it to the assessor's recommendation. So I'm going to put, uh, that when you read the printed information from the referee, it says, uh, the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimate a decrease in valuation. That is a little bit confusing because she's referring to, doesn't require an additional lowering from what the assessor's new recommendation after he saw this person was. So I'm going to put number 10 after, um, uh, testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I move to lower the valuation. The assessor's recommendation is as follows. Land, $12,920. Improvements, $11,884 for a total of $24,804. Change of concession into the mobile home to fair. That's my motion number 10.
Second.
Uller.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Weems. Brown.
Hi.
Hi.
Protest 405, Brent Burgland at 9432 South Sierra Drive. ID 0087152.67. Prairie View Estates, second subdivision, Lot 5, Block 6. Protested valuation, uh, land at 52,272. Buildings at 228,888 for a total land and building of $281,410. Requested valuation, uh, they would like the land lowered to $35,000. Building to remain the same at $228,888 for a total land and building of 263,888. Reasons for request, the lot valuation is 52,272. A property four lots down the street sold for 28,000 one year ago. In the neighborhood to the north, comparable lots are currently for sale at $35,000. This was reviewed by Charity. Her recommendation is no change. Land values includes the, this land value includes the septic well and electrical improvements to the lot. Vacant lots receive a vacancy adjustment for not being improved.
Perfect.
Yes. Uh, so that leaves the land at 52,272. Improvements at 229,138, which is different than what he has written in up here, but that's okay. The total comes out the same at 281,410.
This is the open question?
Mm-hmm.
Is the owner's request not our? Is it where we wrote the?
So what, where we wrote, it's up here is different than what we have down here.
He wrote that.
So go, this is the correct, okay. So for, for the improvements, that would be 229,138 for a total of 281,410. My recommendation is number four. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Protest number 129, Mr. James Doolin, D-U-L-I-N. 688 Frontier. This is at Lake Maloney Frontier Resort. Property ID is 88255. Lake Maloney, uh, Frontier Resort. I've got a 44 on there, SD44. Okay, okay, sounds good. Thank you. Uh, he is protesting the valuation of $227,967, requesting $150,000. It says he purchased this property in 20, October 2020 for 150,000 with a house on the property. It was a mobile home that was removed. Only a barn with a single room remains. Uh, Charity did work this and did change the value down. And the basis was, let me get to that point and I can.
Is this the one at the end of the road?
The living area over the garage is one large room with a bathroom that only has a toilet and shower in it. The sink is in the large room. It's drywall, but there is no flooring, no bed is present, just full-out couch. You did view this property then? Just some pictures of you view this?
Just pictures.
Yeah. Changed this from a one-story house to a detached garage with finished living area above with plumbing, grade three, good condition.
Can you page through the pictures up there?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is what it used to be.
There's the mobile home that was removed.
Yep, and then this is what is there now.
So the, the bottom floor is not the mobile home remodeled. They can, okay, okay.
That's the garage and then there's that one-room living area above the garage is what it looks like.
I've been at this property.
It's very cute.
Um, I think that what they recommend is good.
Where, where is this at?
This is at.
Frontier Resort.
At the very end of the road.
I know it. Okay, so this is going to be, uh, after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which is land is zero because of Lake Maloney. But then the improvements, which include leaseholder amount, do I understand?
Leaseholder interest.
Leaseholder interest is $181,659. Number seven, if I recommend that, my motion.
And that lowers it?
Yes, it does.
Second. Hi.
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 Okay, this is, uh, protest 250. Parcel ID 86821. Uh, Rebecca J. Rage. Uh, this is also described as Bailey Replat Singles, first Replat tracks 2 and 3, Lot 1. Uh, also noted 5.63 acres. Physical address, 159 East Watch Road, North Platte. Charity, uh, worked this one and, um, protested value is 357,711 and they requested an aggregate value of 305,930. Uh, the comments are, we purchased this property in 2018 for 295,000. It was 21 years old. We've been there five years. The home needs new windows paint and no improvements to warrant a $51,781 increase. Further, the property across from us is listed with four bids for $219,000. Again, Charity took a look at this. Um, they sent a couple, they actually provided a Zillow listing of the property they used to contend that the value was too high. Uh, Charity, uh, I just consulted with her and her comment is the $219,000 reference property is only for outbuildings, not a home. Is that?
Right.
Am I reading that correctly?
The listing is actually for the home is for 349.
So the home, yes. And so here's Charity's comments in, uh, as recommending no change. No change insufficient evidence warrant a change. Listing provided is for the outbuildings and 10.01 acres. The house is currently for sale at 349,000 on the Coldwell Banker website. So that's for the record, a clarification of their contention that it's only worth 219,000. So again, uh, she would recommend the land remain at 25,898. The improvements would remain at $331,813. And the total would be $357,711. I concur, so my motion is number four.
So I almost bought this house. It is worth absolutely, the, the, that recommendation, your motion is 100% spot on. I would second it.
The property that they're talking about selling is this one, this 8914550. And so they're splitting off the outbuildings and then the house. And so the house itself, all by itself, this is for sale for the 349, all the outbuildings are for sale, 290.
Are, are, is this the one that's currently for sale?
Yes.
Oh, I was out there also.
Yeah.
That's.
This is where it is. It's Ryan Sellers' house.
Oh, and, yeah, and it wraps around, okay.
Yeah, so they have the outbuildings and the house are separated and for sale.
So second. Hi.
Hugley.
Hi.
Woodruff.
Hi.
Hi. This one, I might need a little group think on this as well. Differing, uh, recommendations from the assessor and the referee. This is protest 420 for a Cole Schaefer. Property ID is 80475. The real property description is part of the northeast quarter of 35-13-32. 17.13 acres. The protested valuation for 2023 has landed at $34,745. Improvements at $687,172 for an aggregate valuation of land and improvements at $721,917. The protest, or the requested valuation drops the aggregate down to $598,496. The reason for the requested valuation change is they say it's substantially excessive inflation of valuation of $123,421. The previous value was taxed at $598,496, which is what they are requesting. And current alleged value was estimated is what I read into the record. There has not been much for improvements. They state that we are taxed out. So the assessor recommends no change. Due to insufficient evidence to warrant a change, they received updated cost table for 2023. The referee recommends lowering the valuation. And her reasons for that is she has submitted an appraisal completed for a bank refinance. The appraisal report was dated September 27th of 2021. I completed this appraisal in good faith and do not think in a few months time, few months' time, there has been an increase in value. The contention is based on the data and the appraisal report and the price range of the subject property. There are fewer sales annually at this level. In addition, it should also be noted that the subject was carefully measured and the correct square footage for the home should be reported on the property card of 3354 square feet. 3,354 square feet. I think what I see on this data sheet has 3,462 square feet. So a little bit, we're, we're calculating a little bit extra in square feet.
So my question is, is that appraisal attached to there?
There is no appraisal in here.
So we did not see it?
Right.
Marcia did the appraisal.
Marcia did the appraisal and she's stating as much. For a bank refi in 2021.
2021, so.
More than just a month or so.
More than just a few months' time, like she states.
How, how much difference are they, between the appraisal and what the assessor has?
The assessor is recommending dropping the aggregate from the 721,917 that we assessed to 600,000 even, so 121,917.
They're suggesting dropping it that much?
She's.
And what's the referee recommending to drop it to?
Drop it, to drop it, that 121,000.
And the assessor's office said no change.
No change.
Okay, so the assessor says leave it at 7 something?
Yep, 721.
And she wants it dropped to 620, the referee?
To 600.
Okay, yours, here would be my questions if I can. Where is this property located?
It is southwest of North Platte.
Game Trail Road, Hershey.
Oh, it's on Game Trail, South Game Trail?
Yes.
Okay, how far south on Game Trail, anybody know?
8448.
Okay, all right, the area. So, okay, so, so still has some North Platte activity. That's my, my question. Desirable. So that's, that's my first big thing, is it's got desirable North Platte location. Looking at the outside of the house, I wonder, you know, once you get to a certain dollar amount, you do sort of lose that buyer interest. How much land with this property?
17.13 acres.
Answers, uh, those answers both my questions.
Uh, it would, I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, the appraisal dated at 2021, we've had substantial increases since 2021. Contrary to what?
I agree.
The referee is claiming.
The protester provided us absolutely no photos. He made that little comment there.
The little comment, that's it. There's no other evidence.
Protested was that same little belief.
Mm-hmm.
There was no, he had no evidence. If he was out of town, I believe his mother dropped those off.
And I'm looking at these photos, which everybody can see up on the screen. This is.
Yes.
This is a nice property that has several outbuildings. Outbuildings are probably lower in, in quality, uh, in condition.
Not that one. No. Just kidding.
But.
And I'm.
How much square foot was the difference?
100?
Roughly 100.
And you know, we measure outside and we go to the half foot. Some people go to the whole foot.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's easy enough to be a little off.
That, that, to me, that's a nominal, uh, issue. Mine is the, I, I take contention with the appraisal. I mean, A, we don't have it as an exhibit for evidence. We're going off of the, the word of our referee, which I take her word seriously. Um, but it is from 2021. And we have seen substantial increases in the past two years.
You should start double sales, you can see.
But let's, let's talk about, let's talk about how much those increases have been. We have those.
We had that information in our first meeting, but if we could go over that again.
And if we can see the assessment data as of January, so now we're looking at from.
A year and.
A half or whatever.
Year and four months.
Year, a year and four months, right, okay.
Would it not be a conflict of interest for our referee to?
Have done the appraisal?
Have done the appraisal?
I don't know if it's necessarily a conflict of interest because she's bound by a code of ethics.
And not only that, she did the appraisal prior to seeing the property. So she was giving.
Seeing the protest.
Oh, seeing the protest. I see.
She'd already done it as a job, as a, you know, her job is.
In 2021.
In 2021.
Okay, to address that, I went to Dawson County one time and watched. And the guys that did their county appraisals acted as the referees. And I don't know whatever come of that, but I know there was a little bit of friction.
Yeah, if they actually.
Referees, since they did the whole.
They did the whole appraisal.
Yeah.
For, for the valuations.
But I remember there was an issue there.
So that we're not arbitrary and capricious, to me, a very logical way would be to take the appraisal date and put an escalator on it that we can come up with. That gives us a certain value, not just taking something in between.
Actually, let me, let me take a look at something. Let's see what it was assessed at in 2021.
Yeah, sure.
And see if that mirrors.
In 2021, it was assessed at 598,496.
Which she's recommending 600,000. That's pretty darn close.
So we're right on at that point.
So, and that just reinforces. So, and that just reinforces my opinion that the assessor's office is probably correct in this.
But let's, but while I agree to a point, here's a point I would bring up. Twenty-one, we used twenty-ten construction values. Twenty-ten construction values, now.
Which is the rationale for the assessor, that they added the two thousand twenty-three costing tables.
Okay, right, we did add the two thousand twenty-three costing table, but that took what was right on in twenty-one and in one year jumped at this, so maybe we are a little high.
But in, no, I don't know that we are a little high, because in two thousand twenty-one, we would have used the twenty-ten.
Ten, yeah.
So that would have been, we would have been assessing at a value less than what it was actually in two thousand twenty-one.
No, because that's what it appraised at, it appraised at six twenty and we were.
Oh, I see your point.
So they, so our appraisal hit pretty close there, but all of a sudden, we put on this new costing this year, and instead of doing this thing, you know, we were right on a year and a half ago, but now we jump up ten years, so it was a bit.
But are those the costing tables that we have used to review all of these protests?
So, but to, but to the point on the changes in the costing tables, the massive inflation, we would have assessed for two thousand twenty-one, January first of two thousand twenty-one, that would have been before inflation spiked, which impacted the costing tables that we're using for two thousand twenty-three. So it was probably assessed very accurately for two thousand twenty-one, which is in line with the appraisal. And I think that the assessors are correct utilizing two thousand twenty-three costing tables and the inflation of those materials, plus the sales that we've seen spiking.
And so that goes back to my point to the assessor's office. When we look at properties in that area, do we have something that's going to give us a, you know, what kind of an increase have we seen for this area residential?
There weren't no double sales.
Not in county, eleven.
Okay.
But was it just in the county, regular sales?
Shit, while in all the counties, it's anywhere from, that was point nine-three, one point nine-six, one point three-seven.
We talked all county sales now?
And this is per change per month.
Per month, I'm talking per month.
And this is the whole county?
This is the whole county. One point three-eight, point eight-seven, here's one around Sutherland, well, that's in Sutherland, five point four-seven. I mean, it's a pretty big range. Our hours, whatever.
Basically, we, from that, we've reduced to about twelve percent a year.
Twelve to twenty-four, depending on.
My rationale for the motion that I'm getting, going to make here is our assessment for two thousand twenty-one, based on the timing before the inflation spike, was basically spot on with what was appraised. Utilizing the more updated information and the sophisticated software that we have for the two thousand twenty-three cost table, I would move. Assuming it's going to be number four, even though they saw both. They saw both, but it's not the recommended, we don't have anything. I'm going to recommend no change.
Then accept the recommendation of the assessor.
Right, number four.
Which is number four.
Yeah.
So I'm correct in.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to, my motion would be number four, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented, which would include evidence provided or testimony provided by the referee for the appraisal, even though we don't have a copy of the appraisal, I don't believe that it warrants a change. That would be my motion, keeping the valuations of what was read into the record.
And read that again.
The land at thirty-four thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars, which actually I'm questioning that just a little bit because of seventeen point one-three acres, but improvements at six hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars for an aggregate valuation of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars.
I'll second the motion. I just did a real quick calc on basically what they were saying. And that was non-scientific, you know, that twelve, thirteen percent a year brings it to that six ninety to seven hundred range. So getting up closer to what you were saying versus what the referee is saying, I mean, you know, it's not spot on, but it's more in that realm. I think your point was well-taken on the inflation and stuff, so my point.
One more comment, the acreage. Seventeen acres at thirty-five thousand.
Less than thirty-five.
They also own six hundred and twenty-two acres. That seventeen acres is probably split off for mortgage purposes, so it is classified as egg because he owns the whole entire section.
Okay, so we're, okay.
So that's how you calculate it, okay, I just wanted to know how that was done.
Thank you for that clarification. My motion still stands.
That's giving them the break there, right?
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Hughley.
Aye.
Kuyler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Steen, as part of the conversation.
Bruns.
Aye.
Test number. Oh, Mr. Chairman, would you indulge me in having Henry give us a little update on what he found out about that navigable waterways and stuff from central representatives that, you know, we had a question the other day about that. I think that'd be informative for the board.
Please do, Henry.
Alfred, I got curious about it.
Sit down there right by the mic so we can get this recorded.
Okay, I got curious about.
We'll take your audios later.
Okay, navigable waterways. So I called a friend of mine that works at Central, he's been there about forty years. And he basically said it's the Army Corps of Engineers that is in charge of the navigable waterways. So it's federal, it's not state that control that. And then as far as you can be on the water and it's just like at the lakes, if you're on the water, you're okay. The minute you step on land, you're trespassing. And that's with the lakes and anything that goes through somebody's property. So as far as if they're trespassing, I'm assuming the sheriff should go out and deal with that.
Navigable is any flotation instrument? Are we considering an irrigation ditch?
No, that's not true. That was given back in the days, you remember the old Lewis and Clark days? Federal government put on navigable waters, okay? So it's damn near is an irrigation ditch, but they have it labeled as whether it's a navigable waterway or not.
And I did, I forgot to ask him about the canal they.
But anyway, that's.
But I would think it'd be the same.
But they list that as a navigable waterway.
That I didn't ask him, I forgot to ask him.
You mean the Birdwood?
Yeah. Well, it'd be like Tri-County.
White Horse Creek.
White Horse Creek.
Runs up into their pasture.
I think it's White Horse Creek.
It is.
So I can absolutely understand the pond that is off of, the natural pond off the river being navigable, because I'm readily admitting I have kayaked into that pond not knowing it was private property. And it's very easy to do so, but I do have a question about whether or not that creek on the other parcel is.
Yeah, they'd have to get, I'm assuming the Army Corps is who they need to contact to find out.
Anyway, I'm glad they have an attorney though.
Yeah.
Lewis and Clark, that was eighteen oh-four and eighteen oh-five. You were probably just a young lad back then.
I wasn't even born in eighteen oh-four. No, no, I wasn't, I had to take a little bit.
Hey, I licked one of those for me.
Just can't remember which one.
It was the Carbo.
Might have been all of them.
Guess we're taking a short little break here.
I don't have the cooties in.
You're up to damn near shot.
I got vaccinated when we did the COVID.
So you're good?
I'm good, I'm warm. No, I'm ready if you are.
Go.
Do you want to do that?
Oh, I do, I want to get this one out.
Okay, he's ready now.
Here we go.
Okay, protest number three hundred and seventy-three, it's a Myron and Julie Larchuk. parcel number seven eight three five zero point zero. Jurgen subdivision four-four. They're asking that the land remain the same at nine six fifty-one, that the improvements be reduced. Asking for a total land improvements of, it's currently assessed at ninety-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars. They're asking it be ninety thousand dollars. The referee did see this, recommends no change from the evidence that was presented. The assessor's office had not been afforded the same information that the referee has, but it was clearly a flood in twenty-one and it caused damage to the basement. And you can see where they're tearing it up and it's, there was clearly damage. Assessor's office reviewed that, and it would be my motion number ten, that after testing or evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation as follows. Leave the land at nine thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Give a ten percent functional depreciation for the water issues, the damage to the basement. That would revalue the improvements to seventy-nine thousand eight ninety-four. For a total land improvements of eighty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars, that's my motion.
Second.
Kuyler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye, you owe me.
I do owe you. I've seen the property, I've saw the videos, I witnessed the damage. I think that's an excellent decision to, I mean, you guys lowered it even more than their request based on your valuation, and good job. Protest number four zero six, Deanne Nicholson. Property zero 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 one four four five point zero zero, original town one fifty-five. Physical address two 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 East Tenth Street. Protested valuation. A hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. They are requesting it be lowered to a hundred and five thousand dollars. Reason, no improvements done, current difference seems too much. I realize some of the increase, but eleven point two six five is too much, thank you. And I don't think there were any pictures or anything other than the assessor's office pictures attached with this. It was reviewed by Ashley. Her recommendation is land at fourteen thousand three hundred and seventy-five. Improvements at a hundred thousand one hundred and seventy-two for a total of a hundred and fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy-two. No change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. My recommendation is number four, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Caleb, that dwelling is not right, should be one hundred seven ninety-seven.
On the improvement?
Yes, the improvement should be one hundred seven ninety-seven.
Okay, and this says one hundred one seventy-two, do I change that here? Red pin?
Sorry, must have. Total value is correct.
So one hundred.
Seven ninety-seven, the total in the land was correct, I just must have fast fingered it.
One hundred seven nine seven?
Yes.
Okay. Good catch. Yes.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Please. Bruns.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Kuyler.
Aye.
Protest number one seven nine, this is a Karen Mead, three hundred North Bear Avenue, lot two two two. Property ID is five one six four seven. This is, the real description is Red Cedars Community, lot two two two, improvements only.
I'm out, sorry, we did that yesterday.
Nothing on it. Or it's not written on even? Absolutely nothing.
Must be a duplicate.
I thought I'd remember seeing it.
Did it yesterday.
That's why I saw the picture, I thought, boy, there's two of them just like that.
Yeah, there's absolutely nothing on it.
We're just seeing if you're paying attention. Good job.
It's hard enough I can't even pay attention. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Protest two six two. The ID of the property is eight two seven six zero. Described as Marshall Heights subdivision. Physical address is seventeen nine eight six West Antelope Road, Hershey. The petitioner is Tari Jordan. Okay, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a comment for the record on this particular protest. Cognizant of the fact that we've been stressed by the state officials to make sure these are complete, with an emphasis on request of valuation being filled in, this does have that. But I will note for the record that they did not check that they are authorized on behalf of the owner to file this protest, yes or no? However, also for the record, conferring with the county assessor, this individual, Terry Jordan, is in fact an owner on the property. So I'm going to make a, I don't think there's a great assumption to make that they, she has permission to file this protest. Also further note that it's going to be in their benefit, so, but in any way, I'm just wanting to point that out so that all are doing their best to be totally thorough on the application. All required things are filled out. Okay, so current value is forty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for the land, eighty thousand four eighty-one for the improvements. Total value, one hundred twenty-eight thousand nine seventy-one. They're requesting the land stay at forty-eight thousand four ninety, but reduce the buildings to sixty-seven thousand eight ten for a total of one hundred sixteen thousand three hundred dollars. They, their reasons are cited, condition issues, cracked in the ceiling, no insulation. They provided some pictures, and Ashley looked at this. And she concurred that there is some type of, she attributed it to water damage, there's pop outs on the, on the stucco, the drywall, and the ceiling. And so she recommended to change the condition to blown over and add a five percent functional depreciation for the damage to multiple ceilings from the water. I would have to concur to pictures lending credence to that. So her recommendation would be to leave the land at forty-eight thousand four ninety, but in, but reduce the improvements to sixty-nine thousand eight sixty-six, which would make it a total of one hundred eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. I would also further note that's within about two thousand fifty-six dollars of the requested reduction. So they got a substantial benefit there. So my motion would be to approve that reduction, number seven.
Second. Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Kuyler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest four-two-one. This is from Cole Schaefer. I believe this is the same one that I had just a moment ago, as far as the protester. Property ID is eight zero four seven five point one zero. The real property description is the west half of the southeast quarter and part of the northeast quarter of thirty-five dash thirteen dash thirty-two. Six hundred and twenty-two point eight seven acres. The protested valuation for two thousand twenty-three has land, are no improvements, so the total valuation as well, at three hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. The requested valuation drops that value, the total valuation to three hundred and fifty-two thousand forty-two dollars. Yes, it is the same, same owner, okay. Reason for the requested valuation change is it's the same land. Nothing has changed. A higher valuation means more than we have to pay for the school levy. I take it you probably didn't vote for. We are taxed out. So they're, they're requesting the same valuation that they had last year. Looks like Julie worked on this and supplied a letter, which I'm going to read in for the record. She's recommending no change. The protest submitted is on an unimproved ag parcel located in Market Area 3. Market Area 3 is currently at 71% of market value based on sales within the current three-year sales ratio period. Nebraska currently is a market value state, so I am unable to make any adjustments based on production or income generated. Per Nebraska state statutes, she can only value based on the required three-year current sales. Market Area 3 was barely in compliance at 69% before she did her adjustments to the Area 3 ag land values, raising all three classes of the ag land, irrigated, dry, and grassland values. She had many sales in Market Area 3 during the required three-year ratio, three-year sales ratio period. And now indicate my current 2023 ag land values fall within the required statutory range of 69 to 75%, coming in at 71%. Therefore, she is recommending no change to this parcel at this time. No evidence provided to warrant a change. This did also go to the referee. The referee is recommending no change. As the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value, it would be my motion, number five, move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second. And why, you know, I remember the other piece we looked at. Why were they asking this to be reduced?
Just that it's the same land. They didn't do anything to improve the value at all.
God, God bless them because, you know, think about that. If we don't do anything to improve our land, I have some, I haven't done much to improve it, but my value's gone up. So if I go to sell that, I'm going to make some money and I really didn't do anything.
Investment?
It's a good investment. Land then.
Land. Good investment.
Did work. Yeah. I did something right.
You got it right. So did I.
Me too.
Hubley.
Aye.
Ullrich.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
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 I did put offense right. Okay, protest number 374 Walter W. Tiffany Elmigley. Can we get a take two?
We can't. It won't go any lower. And Melissa already has her coat on. I'll just span myself.
Robert W. Tiffany Elmigley. Parcel number 55597.0. Red Fox Replant Lot 1, 2.49 acres. They're asking the total land improvements be reduced from $356,768 to $305,000. No improvement been made to this property since the previous assessment. An increase of $51,000 is not reasonable. The condition of the property is unusable due to the incline and terrain. Would be my motion that number four, that after testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence warranted does not present a change. Leave the land at $50,215. Improvements at $306,545 for a total of $356,760.
Second.
Ullrich.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Protest 379, Brian Lee at Bristol's First Replant, Lot 26. Property ID 0067585.00. Protested valuation, land $135,000. Buildings, $67,229 for a total of $202,229. Requested valuation for $120,000 on land. Buildings, $37,229 for a total of $157,229. Reasons for request, neighbor's lot is valued at $55,000. Mine is $135,000 for same size lot. Had water damage in-house years ago. Still haven't fixed roof and siding. He did attach quite a few pictures that support the evidence that the house is in need of repairs. He also attached an insurance claim that shows payment to replace, I believe, the roof. And that was in 616 of 22. It was reviewed by Henry. It did go before the referee. Henry's statement is, after reviewing the taxpayer information, he did change the condition to below normal for its age. Land is priced per lot in this area and is equaled with other improved lake properties. The referee agreed with Henry's recommendation. I agree with the assessor's recommendation to, and he did agree to lower the value based on the condition of the property. The land will stay the same at $135,000. Buildings were lowered to $59,030 for a total of $194,030. My recommendation is number 10. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Protest number 308, Samantha Moe. 606 South Maple Street, North Platte. Property ID is 33140. This is a residence at Park Subdivision 218. Protesting the valuation of $69,855. Requesting $62,629. There have been no updates. This property windows need replaced. Foundation cracked. Many photos would indicate those are true facts. And the house is in, there's quite a few issues. And Ashley, you reviewed this and I would have to concur with your assessment that you changed the condition on the house to normal and added 5% functional for foundation issues. There's several photos. There's interior cracks in the walls and ceiling. Door trim is missing on several interior doors and carpet needs to be replaced. Exterior, multiple foundation cracks. So I think it is totally in order for number seven. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation. And that would be land at $7,992. Improvements, $53,261 for a total of $61,253. Number seven is my motion.
Second.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Uh...
Ullrich. Woodruff.
Aye.
Protest 271. Property ID is 92264. 92264. Further described as Wisdom Replant, Plight Bet Second Subdivision and Wisdom Sublots 1 and 2. Approximately Lot 1, .64 acres. This is physical address 411 Locust Street, Southernland, Nebraska. The petitioner is Michael W. Einspar. Mr. Einspar, his current property value is $106,929. He's requesting a value reduction to $98,500. Again, those are just aggregates, not broken down. His comment is enclosed, there are two photos of houses in the same block of our residence. Photo one is what's left from the house fire with an open basement. No one's living there and this is next to our house. Photo two is house, and that's where the narrative begins. I did look at the houses, but based on the picture on the property ID card and pictures he's enclosed, I don't see any pictures of his own house, Ashley. And you're not noted as the one who made the comments, but I assume from the fact that you were on the back page making comments that you, you reviewed this. And that's fine. I'm just making a note of that. Just for the record, in red, I'm going to put it, AG. Okay? Thank you. You recommend, Ashley recommends land stay at $23,076 and improvements at $83,853 for a total of $106,929 because the evidence is insufficient. And in fact, I never did see anything regarding his property. He did, he did, I will give, for the record, he did make a note. I'm compelled to read it in. Across the street in the house down from our residence is in need of repair and there's no one living at the residency there. I believe these two properties would have a direct bearing on my property valuation. As for my property, there have been no improvements made. Still unfinished basement. And although the lot is a bigger size, you cannot get city sewer to the east because it is too shallow for city sewer. Thank you for your time to take a look at this. So actually, none of those things can impact our evaluation, correct? And I'm getting a negative
No, sorry.
acknowledgment that, okay, you're in, you're in agreement with me. So again, I just read in the record of those values and so the motion is no change, which is a number four.
Second.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Ullrich.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number 422. This is from, again, a Cole Schaefer. The property identification number is 83775.00. The real property description is all of 3-12-32. This is 660.20 acres. The protested valuation for 2023 has land, which this, this property is only land, no improvements, has land at $393,726. That is the aggregate. The requested valuation has the total valuation dropping down to $377,321, which I would point out is what it was valued at for 2022. The reason for the requested valuation change is, much like the last protest, nothing has changed on this property. A higher valuation also means more that we have to pay for the school levy. We are taxed out. The protester went this and provided a letter. It is verbatim what I read into the record for the last protest. I'm not going to read it for this particular protest because it is part of the file. But you all have heard those words. And the referee, that, that letter recommends no change due to the market sales and having to adjust based on that per Nebraska state statute. The referee's recommendation is, the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. So I would move, number five, to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Okay.
Hubley.
Aye.
Ullrich.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Protest number 407, Deanne Nicholson. Property number 0001485.0. Asking that the land improvement be reduced from $11,500 to $7,479. Actually, there, there aren't any improvements. It's just the land only.
This lot is right behind her previous, the house that she protested before.
And I would, it would be my motion that, number one, move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Valuation is equalized with like properties. Leave the land at $11,500 as it's equalized with, if were, properties in the neighborhood.
Second.
Ullrich.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Hubley.
Aye.
Protest 380, Brian Lee for property ID 22733.00. Cruz First Replant, Lot 1. Land is valued at $15,138. Buildings at $179,191 for a total of $194,329. They are requesting a lower valuation for the buildings only to $140,000 for a total of $155,138. Reason for requested valuation, bought for $150,000 two years ago. Have done zero improvements. Wood on building rotted. House needs painted. Interior is dated. I don't know. There are a few pictures showing some rotting siding and soffit and fascia. It was reviewed by Ashley. Her recommendation is no change. Insufficient evidence to warrant a change. It did go before the referee who agreed with Ashley. No change. The information presented by the owner is not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. My recommendation is number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Wayans.
Aye.
Bruns.
Aye.
Ullrich.
Bruns.
Ullrich.
Aye.
Protest number 183, Kenzie Cox. 3605 West 14th Street, North Platte. Parcel is 54860. This is Lincoln Highway, Fourth Edition 10. It's 2.21 acres. They are protesting the valuation of $270,822. Requesting $202,278. This did go to the, in front of the referee. And the referee is differing with the assessor's recommendation. The referee is utilizing an appraisal from 921 of $146,000. The assessor is lowering the valuation on the buildings slightly to, but just a little higher than the referee. So help me folks. About a $5,000 difference, 251,000 to 246,000, but the appraisal was done in March, September of '21. So there's a difference in time similar to what you encountered. So I am going to go with the assessor's evaluation just because of that difference in timeframe when the appraisal was done. We're not far off. The comments made is by Henry is, after speaking with the taxpayer and reviewing the information, change the condition to normal. Corrected some plumbing fixtures, number baths, the two half baths, a wet bar. Land is already being priced as, combined with three other parcels, which I will get to in my next three protests. So the land will be, excuse me, let's go back here to number 10. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor and referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation, which is land at $10,049. Buildings at $241,115 for a total of $251,000. for a total of two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-four. This is number ten is my recommend, my motion for lowering this evaluation.
Second.
Williams.
Hi.
Brent.
Eli.
Hi.
Woodruff. Hi.
Protest two-six-nine, property ID is eight-seven-four-four-zero. Petitioners Tamara R. Johnson. Described as Lake Maloney Lot Number Ninety-One, improvements only, forty-four dash A-one MPTP. Physical address, four-twenty-one Sandpiper Way, North Platte. Protested value is five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars. The land has a zero value because, of course, it's a lake lot. Requesting reduction to four-hundred-and-forty thousand for the improvements. See attached documentation, which includes personally researched comparables to neighboring properties on Sandpiper primarily, and then also additional photos of the condition of the house. We'll note, there's a number of comments and comparisons here, but Ashley reviewed this, and Ashley, I guess, for the record, I would note that they are using comparables that are 2022, so they're probably not going to be accurate in today's reevaluation. Is that?
Well, twenty-two would be.
Yeah.
Well, did you, do you recall this property?
Yes, I spoke with her, she brought me in the pictures. I mean, she, and I did speak with her after, and I don't think she was extremely happy that I didn't lower it all the way down, but she understood. And if I remember, I, some of her comparables, I think some of them were different years or off by some square.
She goes clear back to 2018 up to 2022 on.
I think that was just.
Is that hers?
I think that was hers.
Yeah, okay, comparison home number one. Twenty, here you go, twenty, twenty-three valuation, three-hundred-and-forty thousand, two-thousand-and-sixty-four square feet, and so forth. Let's see, number two is, this is South Maloney Drive. Total living area, twenty-two-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet, five-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars.
You have to make sure that South Maloney was on the lakeside.
Sandpiper Way, again, twenty-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five square feet.
Yeah, so I kind of wrote down the comparables down here.
Yep.
Her comparable number one is across the road, so I told her that wasn't very comparable because the leasehold is only a thousand, a hundred thousand versus the three-thirty-five.
Three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, right.
And hers is the smaller, hers has less square footage than the rest of her comparables, anywhere from two-hundred-and-forty to thirteen-hundred square foot more than her. So I did take into effect the interior pictures of her house. So regardless, yeah, the outside has been up kept, but the inside is still quite dated, so.
So again, Ashley, based on comparables that she's showing you, and you obviously had a conversation in depth.
Yes.
You're comfortable that we're within the realm of.
Yeah.
Value compared to the neighborhood.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
Very good. And yes, and I did note that that leasehold value was fixed at three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand for this property in January of this year. So again, with Ashley's recommendation and review and conversation with this person, they did provide some evidence on condition. So she's recommending, of course, the land is still at zero. The improvements would be slightly reduced by grading, or I should say by fixing a normal, above-normal condition to the home, which would make the improvements five-hundred-and-thirteen thousand three twenty-nine. So my motion is to approve that adjustment, number seven.
Second.
Brent.
Hi.
Eli.
Hi.
Lula.
Hi.
Wies.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four-two-three. This is, again, from Nicole Schaefer. The property ID number is four-seven-zero-six-five-point-zero-zero. The real property description is the Westfield Edition, Lot Eleven, Block Four.
Excuse me just a moment, I beg your pardon. I have to, for the record, note that I'm going to have to in red pen correct a typo on the total value, it's five-hundred-and-thirteen-point-three-twenty-nine versus a comma. No big deal, but it could be a big deal, right?
It could, it could.
So I'm going to fix it.
Okay.
And I didn't, sorry to interrupt you, Chris, but I just want to make, for the note, as a record, I'm going to correct that in red pen.
And that was on protest.
That was on protest two-six-nine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, back to protest number four-two-three. The information that I read into the record a moment ago. The protested valuation has land at nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars. Improvements at two-hundred-and-five thousand two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars for a total valuation of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The requested valuation drops the buildings down to two-hundred-and-one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Actually, that's the aggregate, excuse me, for land and buildings, two-hundred-and-one eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Okay? Two-hundred-and-one thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. The reasons for the requested valuation change is, or are, the home is currently under construction and it is not inhabited. They did provide some photos. I do see that it is under construction. I will note that in their additional information that they provided, that they bought the home in 2022 for two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars, which sets fairly good indicator for what the arms-length transaction for your market would be, which is twenty thousand less than what we have it assessed for. That note, my curiosity would say, because it is under construction, vacated, does it make sense to do a vacancy or what have you? But time doesn't allow for it, and where we already have it assessed for twenty thousand less than what they bought it for last year, I think that that suffices for that break in the assessed value. They did see, the assessor's office, Charity worked on this. She recommends no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. They also went to the referee. The referee recommends no change. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. Prior sale on the subject sets the market value. So it would be my motion, reason number five, I move to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Eli.
Hi.
Lula. Woodruff.
Wies.
Hi.
Protest number four-hundred-and-twelve, Timothy B. and Brenda M. Malmcarre. PI number zero-zero-eight-seven-zero-zero-six-point-seven-four. It is Jan de Barre Heights, first subdivision, Lot Fifteen, Block Three. They're asking the total land improvements be reduced from three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars to four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Comment was an eighteen-year-old home with an eighteen-year-old floor coverings, eighteen-year-old cabinets and countertops, eighteen-year-old painted walk, painted walls. If we were to sell this property, we would have to make a large upgrade allowance. Be my motion, number four, that I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change. It would set the land at fifty thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. The improvements at four-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars for a total of four-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. New costing from 2010 to 2020. Miss you is done this appraisal.
Second. Protest number three-eight-one, Larry Allen, property ID zero-zero-three-zero-five-seven-seven-point-zero-zero. Description, Neville Second Administrative Subdivision, Lot One. Protested valuation is a hundred, wait, a hundred and fifteen thousand ninety-six. They are asking it be lowered, land to six thousand two hundred, buildings to ninety thousand for a total valuation of ninety-six thousand two hundred. Reason for request, roads not maintained, dirt, no improvements or repairs done since, spot the place, ditches don't get mowed. The neighbors turned the neighborhood into a junkyard. He did attach a lot of supporting evidence to that statement. There are many pictures of his neighbor's property and of the road ditches, but really nothing pertaining to his property. This was Ashley. Her recommendation is no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. It went before the referee, who also agreed with Ashley. No change, the information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. That leaves the property land at seventeen thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Improvements at ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-one for a total of a hundred and fifteen thousand ninety-six dollars. While I have empathy for people whose neighbors aren't good stewards of their property, I do agree with the assessor and the referee. So my recommendation is number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Woodruff.
Williams.
Hi.
Brent.
Eli. Question, is that in the city limits? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and vote, I apologize. Before you vote.
I, yeah, yes, it is in the city limits.
Maybe they have to make a call to the city, see if they can get it out there.
Good suggestion.
Good suggestion.
Okay, protest number one-eight-one, Mackenzie Cox, thirty-six-oh-five West Fourteenth Street, North Platte parcel five-four-eight-five-five, Lincoln Highway, fourth addition, number nine. This is also a two-point-two-one acre. They are protesting the valuation of ten thousand forty-nine dollars, requesting five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. The reason being, they had an appraisal. This happens to be the second of four protests by this owner. Three of these parcels have been bind to lower, to have a valuation, I should say. And this did go to the referee. The referee did concur with Henry that no change is in order. Land is already being priced as combined with parcels, number five-four-eight-six-zero, five-four-nine-one-five, and five-four-nine-twenty. So my recommend, my motion is going to be no change, number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change, number five.
Second.
Wies.
Hi.
Brent.
Eli.
Lula. Woodruff.
All right.
Protest two-seven-four, parcel ID three-two-zero-eight-zero, three-two-zero-eight-zero. Petitioners Michael J. Hunt. Described as Platteview subdivision, part of the seventeen, part of seventeen, da-da-da-da. Lot, one-point-nine-three acres. I will also note that this individual did not complete the authorization acknowledgement for protesting. However, they are the owner of record, and so again, I'm comfortable that this is, they are entitled to do so. So the protested value is a hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and that's land and improvements. They requested reduction to eighty thousand dollars. Comments are, home needs maintenance, repairs, and the previous renter destroyed a lot of it. It also has vandalism damage, hail damage was, and where and tear estimate? Question mark, photos attached, there are a myriad of photos attached, very detailed, very evidentiary that this house has got some major problems. Apparently, agreed, and this is going to be a condition reduction. He's suggesting the land remain at thirteen thousand fifty dollars, which it is today. Buildings would be reduced to seventy-three thousand three twelve for a total value of eighty-six thousand three sixty-two. So my motion is number eight.
Second.
Brent.
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four-four-zero. This is for Lisa A. Davis. The property ID number is two-six-six-four-five-point-five-four. Real property description is Lincoln Highway, first replat, Lot Three. The protested valuation for 2023 has land at two, twelve, excuse me, twelve thousand twenty-eight dollars. Buildings at fifty-five thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars for aggregate valuation of sixty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. The requested valuation drops the aggregate down to twenty-three thousand two hundred and seven dollars and twenty-three cents. The reasons for requested valuation change are inappropriate slash erroneous information stated by the appraiser. See attached addendum and documentation. She did provide twenty-two exhibits. They are, her exhibits are lengthy. A lot of them are photographs, there are numerous municipal light and water bills. In summary, and anybody can, if any of you want to read through these exhibits, please let me know, I'll pass them down. But in summary, she quotes a news article from the North Platte Telegraph from August third, 2022, stating that increases on the north side of town. She talks about the multiple listing service, the MLS, demonstrates that the property status for residents is no. Apparently, this is a shop, not a house, in a residential neighborhood. She highlights with the utility bills that there is no plumbing fixtures in the building. There's no water going to it.
Could you go back to that last picture? The one, there was one that just looked out of place, that.
Used to be a mobile home on there.
So there's not now?
No.
Oh, so that was confusing, when I looked at that, and I looked at that, I said, we're not talking the same property.
No, the same property, yeah, there used to be that double Y that sat next to this.
Thank you.
It's just this garage.
Okay, so that's what we're looking at right now, is this property? And we say that's a garage now that's used as a business, is that correct?
So Henry worked on this. He spoke with the taxpayer and reviewed information they provided. Priced the building as a grade-six shop in normal condition. Building is not a house. Building has no heat or plumbing. So his recommendation is to lower it, keeping land the same, but lowering the improvements from fifty-five thousand and some change to twenty-two thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars for an aggregate valuation of thirty-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. The referee also was, they saw the referee. The referee agrees with the assessor's recommendation. After looking at all the exhibits at length, looking at the photos, I agree with that recommendation as well. It would be my motion, number- It would be my motion, number ten. After testimony and evidence presented to both the assessor and the referee, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation of what I read into the record.
Second.
Charity left a hand tag that says.
Yeah, she would see it in the.
Yeah. If it's, if it's a house, call me.
Yes.
Well, it wasn't a house, so she never called charity. So charity assumed, yeah, living area.
Right. No, I mean, and it's, obviously, the photos show that this is a shop. And she states that she got the tag, but that it was not a house, which is why she didn't call. So everything lines up, but my motion still stands.
My second is still the same.
Aye.
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 Okay, protest number four hundred and thirteen. This is by a Dale in Tessa Matuzek. PI number zero zero eight five seven three zero point zero. They're asking the land and improvements be reduced from two hundred and four thousand seven sixty-three to a hundred and eighty thousand. Since the previous total valuation was a hundred and seventy thousand, the current condition of the house on the property did not show, the valuation should increase thirty-four thousand dollars, which is a twenty percent increase. In the basement, the ceiling is not completely in place. There's exposed insulation, et cetera, the walls, the entry, maybe master bathroom, deck is leaning, et cetera. That would be my motion. After testimony and evidence presented to the assessor, I move to lower the valuation to the assessor's recommendation as follows. Land, forty-seven thousand two sixty, improvements, hundred and forty-three thousand four twenty-four. Total land and improvements, a hundred and ninety thousand six eighty-four. That was, taking into consideration a ten percent functional for the basement and the ceiling. And the woodshed has no value and the metal building was priced at a dollar a square foot. So I think that this is one where we really had a meeting of the minds between the assessor's office and the individual. And I just feel good about the recommendation the assessor's office made. That's my motion, number seven.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and thank you for your work, everybody in the assessor's office, listening to those people and doing the best you can.
I second that. Protest number three eight two, Larry Allen. Property ID zero 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 seven four eight five point zero zero. Bailey in Sims Replot, the west thirty foot of Lot Two and all of Lot Three. Protested valuation, a total of eighty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. He is asking for a lower valuation, land to ten thousand five hundred, buildings to fifty-nine thousand seven hundred for a total of seventy thousand two hundred. Reason, no improvement since purchase, see attached photos. He did attach supporting evidence in the photos. It was reviewed by Ashley. Her recommendation is no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. All Southside properties received a one point one six adjustment for falling out of compliance with state mandated ratios. It did go before the referee, and she agreed with Ashley, no change. The information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease value. That leaves the land at twelve thousand two hundred and forty-four, improvements at sixty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-five for a total of eighty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-nine. My recommendation is five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Sixty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-five.
Okay, I could have said four forty-five.
I possibly could have.
But that is right, so.
Yes, very good, thank you.
Okay, protest number one eight two, Mackenzie Cox, thirty-six oh five West Fourteenth Street, North Platte. Parcel five four nine two zero. This is Lincoln Highway Fourth Edition, nineteen, two point two one acres, protesting the valuation of ten thousand forty-nine dollars, requesting five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars. This is very similar to the one I just read in a short while ago. The county assessor's office, Henry Voit, and also the referee agree that there is no change. The land is already priced as combined with parcels, five four eight five five, five four eight six zero, and five four nine one five. So my motion will be number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change, number five. This land will stay at ten thousand forty-nine dollars for a total of ten thousand forty-nine dollars.
Second.
Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Protest two nine seven. ID of the parcel is nine seven seven two five, nine seven seven two five. Further described as well, let's see, two oh six South Everett Avenue, Wallace, Nebraska. Apparently, lots six and seven, section fourteen, there are maps. Section, I don't know. Anyway, it's Old Town Wallace, lots five and six, block seventeen, I believe. Petitioners, Clay Wickizer. Protested value is thirteen thousand seventy-six dollars, and they want it reduced to thirty, three thousand dollars. And list that value both in land and improvements, because there's a drawn line between improvements, because there are none. Comment from Mr. Wickizer, demolish the house and garage now, and it just, it just an open lot. He has provided a picture, current photograph, and that is, indeed, looks like an empty lot. Charity looked at the picture and concurred, and the house is no longer present, she says, removed for 2023, sold. She set the value of the land at ten thousand dollars and a zero for the improvements. She's recommending a reduction essentially of three thousand seventy-six dollars. I would concur, so the motion is a number seven.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
I forgot to put a vacancy adjustment on that, can I fix that real quick?
Say that again. Well, if you would like. I would have no objection, you want me to withdraw my motion?
I withdraw my second.
I've officially withdrawn my motion on protest two nine seven. All further adjustments are made forthwith.
She's doing that, mind if I move on to this?
I don't mind.
Can we do that?
Yeah. Unless you don't want to muddy the waters on your narrative.
Yeah, let's just wait, because we're recording, I don't know. It shouldn't take very long.
Do you have a timer?
I do.
Put her on the clock.
We want to get it right.
Yep, this is time to fix it.
We want to get it right, so we'll take the time to get it right.
Time to fix it.
I don't know.
That I can't say.
And, you know, John's always stayed, so he doesn't.
Okay, charity, regarding protest two nine seven. Mr. Clay Wickizer in Wallace, and his vacant lot has been acknowledged now is a vacant lot. Just been presented an adjustment sheet, placing that value at three thousand five hundred dollars for that lot. Is that correct, charity? So I'm going to, in red pen, on this protest form four point two, I'm going to change that recommendation of yours from ten thousand dollars to, in fact, to three thousand five hundred dollars. And so I will re-enter my motion for this reduction. It still would be a number seven, I believe. And again, the new value will be land at three thousand five hundred dollars and no improvements.
Second.
Friends.
Aye.
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 Is this a Wallace property?
This is a Wallace property. Mr. Chairman, I have protest number four two four. This is from a Patrick Smith. The property ID number is two six two eight five point zero zero. The real property description is one, uh, Lincoln Highway Seventh Edition, Lot Five, Block Twenty-One. The protested valuation for 2023 has land at thirteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, improvements at one hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for total valuation of one hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The requested valuation drops the aggregate down to one hundred and five thousand dollars. Reasons for the requested valuation change include poor grade construction, two-by-six-by-twenty-four floor joists, sagging ceilings, unfinished inadequate heating and cooling systems, shed need siding, plumbing would need to be updated, to sell. Driveway only goes to the front of the house, not to garage, and is broken up. The center crown of the street is heightened, higher than the living room floor. This creates a lake in the driveway when we have heavy rains. There's a dead cottonwood tree in the neighbor's yard that would reach our house if it fell. All of these reasons would make this property unsellable or uninsurable. Beg to differ. The property would not qualify for FHA or VA loans in this condition, therefore lowering the value considerably. I therefore respectfully request you to change the value to a hundred and five thousand dollars. This is a three-bedroom, one-bath frame house.
What is the address on that?
The address is seventeen oh eight North Sherman.
Thank you.
There are a few photos provided. They look very similar to what is provided here for your review up on the big screen TVs. Charity worked on this, she recommends no change. Evidence provided does not warrant a change. It also went to the referee, who agrees with that assessment, no change. Information presented by the owner was not sufficient to legitimize a decrease in value. It would be my motion, number five, to accept the recommendation of both the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. The evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Protest number four fourteen, Douglas G. and Deanne L. Brott. Parcel number, or property identification, I should say, eighty-nine one sixty-four point ninety-five. It's part of the northeast quarter of thirty-two twelve thirty, consisting of twenty point six four acres. They're asking the total land and improvements be reduced from four hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars to three hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Recent assessor's office personnel, personal visit clearly showed that we are in the construction the running, with no running water or sewer. She stated the valuation would be left the same. However, in 2023, notice the valuation changes coming in at a hundred and twenty-three thousand seven twelve more than 2022. Appraisal upon completion of the 2022 tax valuation of three seventeen six sixty-eight, thank you. Charity actually looked at this property, the recommendation is no change. When you look at, back at her cards, she had already given a ten percent functional for, I had two notes here that I thought were pertinent. Revalued, improvements using the new updated cost for 2023. And spoke with the owner, and the interior finish is complete except for flooring and water has not been hooked up at the, that part of the house, using a ninety-six, ninety percent complete 2023. Check, checked in the fall of twenty-three for the completion. So she did already take that into consideration. And it would be my motion, number four, that after evidence and testimony presented, the recommend, we use, or I would move, we use the recommendation of the assessor, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change, number four.
Second.
And let me, just for the, I'll read the land at forty-five three twenty, improvements three ninety-six oh sixty for a total of four forty-one three eighty.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Protest three eighty-three, Larry Allen. Property ID zero zero three one zero seven zero. Real property description, Owens Replat five, five four.
Oh, hold on.
I never voted.
I'm just, I don't think I did either. Well, I think my phone cut us all off.
Aye.
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 Aye. We found out what it is, there's a little gremlin in there, that when you close this, he changes.
Turns it back on. So this is protested valuation, land at seven thousand three hundred and thirty dollars, buildings at ten thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars for a total land and building of eighteen thousand twenty-four dollars. Requesting it be lowered to land four thousand nine hundred, building six thousand three hundred for a total of eleven thousand two hundred. Reason, no improvements made since purchase of property, see photos. He does have many supporting photos, it was reviewed by Ashley. Her recommendation is no change, insufficient evidence to warrant a change. Detached garage is already in below normal condition and shed is in normal condition. It did go before the referee, who agreed with Ashley, no change. Information presented does not legitimize a decrease in value. So that leaves the valuation, land seven thousand three hundred and thirty, improvements ten thousand six hundred and ninety-four for a total of eighteen thousand twenty-four. My recommendation is number five. I move to accept the recommendation of the assessor and the referee, which indicates no change at this time. Evidence presented does not warrant a change.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this will be our last protest before lunch. We have two in person starting at one o'clock, and I want to make sure we're on time for those. So this will be protest number one eight four, Mackenzie Cox. This is the fourth, the last of four protests, thirty-six oh five West Fourteenth Street, North Platte, parcel five four nine one five. Lincoln Highway Fourth Edition, eighteen, two point two one acres. They are protesting the valuation of ten thousand forty-nine dollars, requesting five thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars.